So with that, I would like to call us to order at 5:03 PM and ask Coley if he'll serve a prayer tonight. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Thank you very much for that honor. Good evening. Good evening, all. Hope you're all having a good day today. Heavenly Father, Heavenly Father, my own Creator and Savior, coming to you today, coming to you every day, very thankful. Thankful for all that you do for us, all that you give us. Heavenly Father, I know that you continue to give to us and bless us in all the ways that we need. Heavenly Father, that you reach out to our mourners, help them get through their trying days ahead. Heavenly Father, my own Creator and Savior, I pray for special blessings for our children and our elders, please. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day again, and I look forward to tomorrow given by you. Amen.
Thank you, Coley, for that prayer. Council, we have an agenda that's been prepared. Are there any additions to the agenda? Lorelei?
Madam Chair, I wanted to add, well, I have it listed on the new agenda I put out today, but there's a sixteenth item to be, and I guess it's added because that was before today. So I guess it's on the agenda. But the other addition I wanted to bring up, and I'm just gonna throw out there, is the members are asking if there's gonna be a $500 distribution. So I'm gonna just put that on the agenda and hear what people think.
Okay. So is that, so number, so there's no number sixteen because it's already on here? And under New Business, you'd like to add, or under Council, or New Business, you're gonna add that item?
Oh, under Tribal Council Items.
Under TC, we're adding a discussion on a $500. I have an addition under Tribal Council that will be number four, and that is the Great Plains Tribal Chairman's Association meeting taking place in Rapids, December seventeenth and eighteenth. Are there any further additions to the agenda?
If the lease status of the trailers get added to the agenda?
We...
That's on Mondays.
Yeah, that's, and we do have some information that I can share with you. I learned some more things today. But I've been in contact with Arita and I'll update you offline. So Lorelei, so we don't need to add sixteen? It's in there within the fifteen? Is that correct?
Yes, I added it today and resent it, and it's added to the sixteenth item to approve Winnebago's five signatures.
Okay. Probably... Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Isaac. We have a second by Eric. Discussion. Objection. My service. Objection is our objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Okay, so Council, we have the first item on our agenda is reading of the minutes. The first set we have are the eleven fifty mid-monthly meeting minutes. We have a motion. We have a motion by Eric. The second by Isaac. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Our next set are the November seventeenth General Council Meeting Minutes. We have a motion. Motion by Isaac. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Eric. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Our next set are the eleven nineteen Special Tribal Council Meeting Minutes. We have a motion. Motion by Isaac. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Eric. Question. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Our next set are the eleven twenty-two Orientation Reorganization Meeting Minutes. We have a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Well, we have a motion by Eric. Were you motioning? Because we had a motion by Eric.
Yeah, I was trying to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to table this because there's an unfinished motion in the draft. And our executive assistant has my written notes, and she's out of town. And I did send an email to the council member that made that motion, but I didn't get a response in time for this meeting. So I'd like to table that.
So Eric, okay, hold on. Eric put a motion on the table right before you started speaking. So Eric, do you want to carry that motion on what Lorelei expressed?
Yes, I'd like to table this.
Okay. So who wants the second? Get my Isaac. Eleven twenty. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. The last set are the eleven twenty-nine twenty-one Emergency Management Services Report. We have a motion. We have a motion by Isaac. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Eric. Question. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Now we'll move on to the ratifying the five signatures for the membership's information. We had a postponed meeting as a result of mourners in the community, and all those items, all those action items were facilitated by five signature approval, and that is the reason why the so many items. So there was discussion earlier if the council wanted to do all these in one action, or if they wanted to be done individually. So I'll leave that up to the council if there's a motion to ratify one through sixteen, or if we'd like to do them individually. Five, I've seen this one. We have a motion. We have a motion by Rona to ratify five signatures, items one through sixteen as presented. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Eric. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. That brings us to New Business.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to put in a statement here for the members that are watching. These items are, I have them on file in my office, and I can share, answer any questions any tribal member has to know which specific, which each one is about. And I just wanted the members to know that we discovered, or I did, that putting our Winnebago's action items out when we put our agenda out to social media lets our competitors see our promotions, and we don't want our competitors to see what we approve for Winnebago's Casino. So that's why from now on, when it comes to ratifying five signatures, if we did anything for Winnebago's action items, are not gonna be on the agenda because we gotta protect our casino's business against competitors. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Lorelei, for clarifying that and for you making the information available to the membership. So that brings us to our next section, the New Business. The first item that I added was the Code of Ethics Review of Mileage Reimbursement. Recently, the Tribal Council had an orientation meeting, and we had it off-site at the Ho-Chuck Center in Sioux City, Iowa. And currently, the ethics policy that the council operates under states that the council doesn't receive mileage for anything under fifty miles. And just in the course of the time that I've been fortunate to sit down here, I've seen the council not be, accept or be offered mileage for when they have to travel less than fifty miles. And with the price of gas going up and it not wanting to assume that somebody has the resources to make that trip on any given day, perhaps you've taken care of your family, perhaps you've donated it, perhaps you, you know, and those those aren't up for us to wonder, but we should just be giving the tools available to the council to carry out the functions that the council is being asked to do. And when the, any council or employee travels outside of their normal course of business, then this is an eligible expense. But since our ethics policy says that anything under twenty miles is not allowable, we did not facilitate mileage for council to attend the orientation meeting. Further, there was parking that some individuals paid out of their own pocket, and I don't want to also assume that they had the money to pay that out of their own pocket. So my request is that the council would consider changing that fifty miles to either twenty miles, ten miles, anything outside of Winnebago, you know, whatever the council thinks is appropriate. But I'm just bringing it forward as a discussion item and trying to support everyone so that we can do the people's work. So that's what that's about. There's any discussion or feedback on that?
I make a motion to change that from fifty to thirteen miles.
All right, we have a motion by Isaac to amend the special procedures. Well, just make your motion. I'll just reflect as he made it. So Isaac made a motion to change the mileage from fifty to thirteen miles. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Eric. Discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Our next order of business is Avenue B Bridge N D O R Agreement. We have a team member that will be discussing that. Hey, Lorelei.
Madam Chair, Alan knows about this. I don't, is he on here?
Yep, Alan was trained by phone.
He might have called the Thirteenth County Commissioner that represents...
I'm on.
Okay. Hey, Alan, do you want to comment on this?
Looks like Lorelei's talking.
Yeah, there is. And that they're gonna put the tarot fee on the line item, and whoever wins the bid has to pay the tarot fee. That's my understanding. So does the Winnebago Tribe want to approve the state's offer to pay for repair of that bridge? And whoever wins the bid gets the, has to pay the tarot fee.
It's their three percent construction tax.
Okay, well, that, does the council have any issue with that, or is there a motion, is there a motion to approve that? Do we have a motion to authorize Avenue B Bridge N D O R Agreement? Lorelei? Are you motioning? Or you got a comment? Motion by Lorelei. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Eric. Discussion.
Just simply clarification that there is no more tarot ordinance that was abolished by Tribal Council Action. This is actually a construction tax, as Alan mentioned.
Thanks, Brian. Rona made that comment, but I don't think she made it on the mic, so, no?
Oh, yeah, I did.
So it's essentially a percentage of the job they have to pay the tribe, so thank you for that. I call for the question. Objection to the motion. Motion carried six zero zero. Our next discussion will be on the BIA lease. This is under New Business. I'll just, for some time now, as everyone knows, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Winnebago Agency is is out where, we all know what that, and they, the government, the federal government leases that tribal building from the tribe. And over time, there's been repairs and things in that building that have, may have fallen by the wayside. And so we learned recently that not only was there not a current lease in place, we also learned that 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 building has some mold and some other things that are, have been, continue to be addressed. And so our Physical Resources Department, through Autumn's leadership, had been working on that. And at some point, there had been a request that to, to put this back on the council or to have the council engaged in some way to support our department. And as I've learned a little bit about this, Autumn forwarded me a bunch of documents and trying to catch up on that discussion. I recently learned that there's some flooring repair going out there, so I understand I'm not entirely in the loop, but there's definitely action happening to address the concerns of that building without knowing, you know, all the information. I started having the feeling, and I might have talked to a couple individuals, I might have run this by Alan, and I said, okay, those are our tribal members that are working out there, and now that we all know about the status of that building, it's really hard to have our tribal members and employees in general that work out there be in those type of environments. And I know some of the employees were allowed in the OST office were working from home, and the BIA employees were called back to be in that building. And so I'm starting to, no, I'm starting to, I believe that it's a hazard for us to have anybody working under hazardous mold conditions. And so I appreciate Physical Resources doing everything they can to correct that so that we could be offering a healthy working environment to the federal government. Autumn, do you want to jump in and comment? I'm just kind of recapping and kind of sprinkling it with my own opinions. So you want to, do you want to express yourself?
Yeah, so we had some issues arise from the BIA regarding some repairs that needed to take place and some issues that needed to be addressed. One was the mold issue, like you said, and the roofing repair. You know, there's some things that we have to follow where the government goes and inspects, and then we have to follow specific guidelines. Some were, you know, the monthly checks on the fire extinguishers. So we installed a dehumidifier in the BIA, and me and Arita, we went out to the BIA to see what mold issues were there. And this was after the testing was done, I'm pretty sure I sent the air quality test to you guys. After we had big time cleaning go and clean the area because there was mold, there was mold on their filing cabinets inside their files. And big time cleaned it, and we went out to go check it, and everything was cleaned up. We talked to Tony, who was, you know, letting us know of the issues that were there. We went in the room where the mold was, and she had said it was all cleaned up, the guys cleaned it good. There was mold on their desk, which she talked to the BIA representative, and they said they can submit a work order for new furniture and all that. And the air quality test, when they came back, there was zero issues regarding any mold. But we did go out there and inspect it. We did notify facilities that the custodian schedule needs to be kept up. There needs to be weekly, monthly, you know, six months to address the flooring, you know, everything needs to be addressed out there constantly.
Thank you, Autumn, for your involvement and your leadership on this issue. As it was kind of going through the process, it was, you know, thought that we really need to support Autumn, and maybe the council needs to come in and be a bigger part of this process. And so I don't know if, and Autumn, you know, has done so much work on this, that if there's suggestion on how the council be involved, I thought maybe we could delegate Rona to oversee that in partnership with, so that the council is involved and then bringing back, of course, information. But that's just a thought. I don't know if the council had any thoughts on what you heard, or if anyone had any questions for Autumn. Lorelei?
I talked with Alan about this earlier, oh, I think it was last week, and Alan said that we, the tribe had already repaired the roof on that building, and that we had plans for the flooring issues for repair. Right, Alan?
Correct, and actually, there's a contract on the flooring already. There's a PO in the system. So I believe that is already moving forward.
And I think that one of the issues that I'm glad Physical Resources, Arita and Autumn are on top of this is the BIA is only paying us fourteen dollars per square foot in the BIA, the admin building, and then at the Police Department, the BIA is only paying us for the Chief's room, his office, but not for the rest of their use of our building. And we charge, other use of tribal space, we charge at least twenty dollars a square foot. And so we gotta at least start at twenty dollars per square foot, means we're maintaining the, you know, the repairs and what's needed in our buildings. But we heard from, I got an email from Councilman LaRose, who said he ain't going for the twenty dollars per square foot. He thinks it should be higher. But I think we need to talk about that because this is an expired lease. And maybe set a committee to work together. And, you know, I remember back, the last time I was on the Tribal Council, we had to evict the BIA because we couldn't get there. At that time, I don't know what the change is, but at that time, there was only one person in the whole Department of Interior that could sign leases. And I remember that they brought that guy in, and Lance Morgan is the one who negotiated with us because he knew how to deal with these types of bureaucrats. But maybe there needs to be a committee and some people put on there to work on the negotiation of this lease to where it's satisfactory to our tribe, just as suggested. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorelei. And, you know, we kind of bring together informal work groups a lot just by maybe who's in the building or who's like, hey, what do you think about this? And so if the council has a willingness to be, to support the department and to get this done, and I think that's a good thing, and I appreciate that. So Isaac, do you got something?
Yeah. So I guess, Autumn, quick question. How long would it take you to come up with a new lease, I guess, without the negotiation if you was just to draft one up?
So usually, we do the lease from the BIA's forms, since it's a government, it's kind of handled like the post office lease is, and it's through the Tribal Council. So like, I can put all the square footage in there, I can put all the repairs we done to it, but the negotiation part was always on a higher level.
Okay. So is there, so I guess just trying to move forward, is that something you feel comfortable doing? And then getting it to the, getting it to the table, and then we could go into the negotiating part of it? I'm just trying to move this thing along because...
Yeah, yeah, so that's, we've been trying to move that lady along. Her name is Adalma. I don't have her last name right now, but, and, you know, we were, because she emailed regarding the issues with the building. So we're like, okay, some of these are getting taken care of right now, and, you know, the other ones are in progress, and the other ones we have planned for the future, which, you know, we're taking care of right now. But so we was like, in that meeting, we said, so we need to, you know, address that issue while we have you right here on the line. You know, we need to address the lease issue. Can we do it right now? She said, we'll have to set up another meeting for that because she couldn't do it right then in there.
Where's her office at?
I included her contact info. I don't know where her office is located at. Probably Aberdeen. I don't know. I'm not too sure. But so we emailed her again, you know, to try to push the issue more, you know, when's the date that we're gonna meet for the lease? And she, her response was, I have a hundred leases, you know, that need to be addressed, and all of them are past due, and some of them don't have a standstill lease. You know, so we were kind of just left that, where we're not important, we don't, you know, meet whatever criteria. So I don't know how far the issue has to go to show them that we need this lease to be addressed.
Okay, so we have somebody in...
To Isaac's question, if Isaac, if somebody wants to make a motion for a work group to support Autumn, you know, that's where kind of where I'm hearing that they need further support. They need somebody else to contact them and say, hey, we're contacting, I'm the Tribal Council, and I'm, so that's, and so just to recap, from what I'm hearing from, you know, some of the team out there, i.e. my mother, is that that there's visible, and so the OST office, that's when you first go in the door, you take a left, it's the one on the left-hand side, the one that faces the parking lot. That one has the most contamination out of the whole building, and there's still visible mold there. So when we had our services come in and utilize our system, you know, that wasn't sufficient. I think this is all, might be interactive, but this is my recap of it, that wasn't up to par with maybe what they had in mind. So what I'm hearing from both sides is that the BIA has a full willingness to pay this lease, and, but they're trying to get tough with the tribe, like, hey, there's all these things wrong, and we're breathing in mold, and the bathroom door, and the roof's leaking, and so, you know, I think, I don't know if, who this person is, but I think we go back and say, how many tribes do you have that has an expired lease? Because ours is expired, so we should come, you know, we encourage you to give this your attention. So there's good ways that we could go about doing this, and so hearing from Lorelei, hearing from Alan, we just need to firm up what, all the work that Autumn has already done, basically.
What this discussion, how this happens.
Well, that's something that, when we're gonna put our paper together, that we're actually not in the greatest position because slum lords right now, but we're working on it.
Yeah.
We're working on it, and that's what we need to say to these folks at the BIA is we've made good faith effort to correct these actions, and we want to engage in this lease and at a higher rate, and so, yeah.
So I was just trying to kind of go along... So um, I, I was just trying to kind of go along and, and sometimes ask questions just kind of from a, a membership point of view for those that are out there that, that may be following this. And so, going along with it, um, the, the, the building itself, I think it needs to be fixed and facilities looks like they're trying to fix what they can. So um, Autumn, I guess, how many, how many people are you thinking on this committee, this work group committee that can focus on just this?
On the lease issue?
Yeah. Three, four-
I feel like four, yeah.
Four. So I'll make a motion to have a, a work committee on the, on the BIA, lease issue and uh, renovation of it.
We have a motion by Isaac. Do we have a second? Second by Eric.
Question.
Discussion.
And I would like to be one of those on that.
Um, in discussion, do we have any other volunteers for the committee? Rona, would you be willing to serve as their treasurer to have awareness on that?
Tori, it's Alan. You can add me. You can add me.
Um, Lorelei, would you like to be on there?
I was gonna suggest somebody within the tribal, within uh, one of our tribal entities that, um, and I was gonna suggest Dennis Johnson, if we could get him to help out. Remember, he's head of Ho-Chunk Capital? And sometimes when these heavy-duty bureaucrats and them types try to get heavy-duty, he's tougher in heck. And he has helped the Housing Authority, um, one had that fire and the insurance company was trying to mess around with us. And he stepped in there and the director over there told me how he was really uh, he knew how to deal with these types. I, I would like to ask Dennis to be on this work group, Dennis Johnson.
Okay, we can-
When it goes down, negotiating right directly with the Bureau.
Okay, we can definitely call on a technical assistance. Okay, so we got a motion, we got a second, um, we got some names in discussion, um, objection to the motion. Oh, well, yeah, this is just to further support Autumn. Autumn is, and this is just kind of like bringing in some muscle to help out Autumn. To um, to further take it to the next level and send the letters we need to send to the right people and um, wrap it up, you know. I, I think we've already identified the problem and Autumn's already worked through part of the solution that are continued underway that we just need to, this leasing. Uh, motion second. Any further comments? Eric?
Do we wanna uh, speak about uh, changing the lease amount up to uh, twenty dollars or more?
So that's what this work group's gonna do. So if you're, if you're available, we're happy to join those meetings. That's what they're gonna kind of um, work towards, figuring those things out and, and how much that building's probably worth, how much, however that process works. I'm not um, okay. Objection to the motion. Motion carried, zero, zero. Our next item under, is, we have, we had previously made a, a donation to the men's shelter to purchase a water heater. And it, there was a little bit um, over the amount that was approved. So um, is there a motion to approve the overage?
Yeah, motion.
We have a motion by Eric. We have a second by Isaac. And the overage is um, one of, okay, so the overage was fifty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. But to make the payment and have the documentation in place, this is necessary. So, we have a motion? Isaac made the motion. Eric made the motion. Isaac seconded. Discussion. Objection. Motion carried, six, zero, zero. The next one. We have a discussion and approve the emergency response guidelines. Physical Resources through Irita and Autumn's leadership and, and, and others, um, worked on the emergency response guidelines for the, the ARP program. And some guidelines emerged. There was a call, some feedback was given. There was, there's been discussion about um, how do we make this available for our off reservation tribal members? And how can we put processes in place that protect, you know, um, just protect the tribe's resources, protect the homeowner and, and what they're doing. And so that's all been discussed. Um, Autumn, did you want to introduce that or Alan? Who, who would like to comment on?
I'm sure, can I make a comment first?
Um, sure. Lorelei was really helpful in um, acknowledging that we include our off reservation relatives. So thank you Lorelei. Go ahead.
I just wanna tell the council that, um, I'm really proud of Irita and Autumn, and the group, Alan and others that worked on this so that we could help our tribal members on and off the reservation with home, emergency home repair. So the last revision they did was sent out, I think it was Friday. And so that's consul attached. And they renamed the program. It's called Winnebago ARP, Home Re- Repair Program. That's the new name of the program. That way it's not confused with the emergency response, the other stuff. So then I just wanna turn that, just explain that. And that was attached. I put it in your boxes today. And uh, I just wanna turn it over to Irita. Thank you.
Thanks Lorelei. Irita, or did you want to comment on that? Irita, I wanna invite you to um, share anything you wanted to about the process, about the feedback you got.
Can you hear me, council? Okay. Um, hello everyone. So this, um, this program is kind of like a new program. Um, well, not really new, but you know, just something that we wanted to help our tribal membership with. Um, you know, before it was just on reservation and then, you know, it was recommended to do off. So, you know, Autumn, myself, Ron, um, we kind of put our brains together and tried to figure out ways to help our off reservation and not make it too difficult. So um, moving forward, and I think, I wanna say it's, it's specified in the guidelines where um, you know, there needs to be a lot of, you know, communications with the homeowner and then the program itself. Um, and you know, um, and I wanna like make mention, I know um, Lorelei talked to me briefly Friday afternoon and she wanted to add, a line item in there and I can't remember right off the top of my head, but it had to do with, you know, homeowners who are continuing to buy. They don't actually have like, you know, the deed to their house or they don't own it at the time. And I know it is on the on reservation where we included that. So, I don't know how council feels about that, but you know, that was a recommendation that Lorelei wanted to add. And I don't know if Lorelei mentioned it or not. But including, um, okay.
Oh, I was just gonna say that, yeah, Lorelei and I discussed that and we talked about how, um, many of the homeowners, unless they're, you know, been paying on their house for thirty years, wouldn't have that deed yet because they're still paying for it, but they are the homeowner. And so um, appreciate everyone kind of thinking of all these things. Um, and that was um, good feedback, I thought. Uh, so that's, so we did talk about that, but this is new information for um, for the council.
Oh, um, Madam Chair, Irita did have Autumn add on the off reservation, um, home repair. Under general requirements for applicants, um, homeowners' examples of documentation would be just like the on-res was, where um, a copy of their, their deed or a copy of their mortgage, or a statement on their on-rent-to-own or a statement they're buying under tax credit. They would, these would all be accepted as proof of the owner's buying. So that will be for both on and off reservation.
The, the other thing that we talked about and I, I see it still in here is um, you guys remember when I was talking about um, people that have owned it for, when it said own it for a minimum of two years? And that was trying to think of people that um, that they're, they're young adults or maybe they're not so young adults, but they're still um, living in the home, the family home. And when the homeowner who may or may not be a tribal member um, passes, that home is gonna go to the children and they are tribal members. So, my comment was that we're trying to um, protect and build up and preserve existing housing stock on the reservation. So my question was um, whether that be reflected in the policy or that there be some flexibility from the decision-makers, that they would be able to be included. So um,
I put that on the um, on reservation guidelines. Under the general requirements, it says home ownership less than two years will be reviewed for extenuating circumstances and proof of documentation of future ownership may be required.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys wanna include it on off, we can.
No, 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 no. I, I don't wanna include it on the off because the whole intent with, the whole original intent was to keep our houses here, um, because we have a housing shortage, so we need the existing houses to um, service. So um, thank you. I was looking at the off reservation. So thank you for making that change. Any other comments from the council on if they, like what they see? Anything else that, firming up?
Madam Chair.
Oh wait, hold on. Lorelei called, she's got a comment.
Okay.
Uh, I, I found one answer was uh, how, when does this expire? And it will expire December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, correct? Okay. Um, do we wanna share the total dollar amount that is in this program?
Sure. Do you guys know that amount? Uh, Autumn, do you know the?
One point five million.
Excuse me? What was that?
One point five million. And so the discussion was when we talked about, we want to make sure um, all our tribal members are able to utilize this program. We said that um, we know that the money will only go so far. And the mo, but um, we, so we acknowledge that, that this is the limited, amount of one-time money that we've gotten through the ARP. So good, good comment, Coley, that um, and that date is the date that those funds have to be um, expended per ARP guidelines. That's right. Is that correct?
They have to be obligated by that point in time. And then we have two years to fully expand after that. So we have to, if we're gonna have these in place, we have to have like contracts or something in place by the end of twenty-twenty-four, assuming we still have funds. But then we can have another two years to um, spend those funds out.
Um, one other point that's worth mentioning to those that are listening, there's um, there's some other, programs that are still underway and have not been approved. We submitted a housing, um, a half plan as we've been calling it. And that has not been approved by Treasury yet. Is Treasury the one that's approved? And once that's been approved, there'll be different guidelines and that serves mortgages and, and buying points and, and other kind of different set of um, priorities. And it was noted that you can only participate in one or the other. So when the tribal member looks at these programs, they need to decide which one do I get the most um, benefit or paying for my buck or my, my maintenance issue. And maybe, so that's something that I wanna mention, that it's, you participate in either or, not both. One of yours, okay.
Oh, just to add on that, uh, Tori, on the half program, they have like six categories. You know, mortgage of your coins, um, other various things that have to do with your mortgage and, now payment assistance if you were displaced at that time to buy a home again, you can get assistance. The very last category on the half program is um, repairs. So even though the half has repairs on it, um, if you receive repairs from the um, ARP, ARP emergency home repairs, you can't receive half home repairs. You know what I mean? But you can still get, you can still get the mortgage assistance. So you can still receive benefits from both. Just that if you receive the tribe's home repairs, you can't receive the um, homeowner's, the assistance funds from Treasury, not receive it for home repairs also. So you can't do two home repairs, but you can do mortgage assistance. And home repairs is-
Awesome. Thank you for correcting me.
No, you can. But you just can't use it for home repair. So under the half, maybe you'll use it for mortgage assistance. Not home repair. Yeah. So thank you for clearing that up. I was a little unclear about that. Um, so with all that, is there a motion to approve the plan as presented? Uh, Lorelei had a comment. Sorry, Lorelei.
Madam Chair, on the off reservation, um, the last time I was talking to the work group, the construction manager suggested that for the off reservation, because they're, i- i- if they're living in, even if it's a small town or a city, when the homeowner's gonna do some kind of repairs, they put in for a, a building permit. Because we're talking about how can we fiscally account for the work um, by a contractor off the reservation. So one of the suggestion, the suggestion from Ron Nor was for the off reservation, um, require that they, they get a building permit from their, their town or their city, in order to know that really is legitimate. That was, and I don't see it anywhere in here, but I see that they added, the contractor has to provide a W nine, and license and bond information. So maybe that's how the work group did it, but I just remember that's what Ron Nor suggested as, another way of um, fiscal accountability. Thank you.
I think it's on number six of additional stipulations, Lorelei. Applicant must provide proof of paid and approved building permit or repairs requested by the city in which the applicant lives.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see that. Thank you. I'm glad we got what he suggested in there. Thank you.
Guys, okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the, the ARP? We got a motion by Isaac. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Eric. Question. Objection, motion. Motion carried, six, zero. Our next order of business in the packet, um, council, um, as you know, over the past several years, the um, Oto Missouri Tribe, the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Winnebago Tribe in Nebraska have been trying to um, re-engage with our, our sister tribes and renew those relationships, talk about how we can help one another, how we can support one another and how we can just um, just maintain those relationships and, and that at one time, we were all one, as I'm told. And um, and going down their, and so, so over this course of relationship and I, I really wanna um, acknowledge former chairman Frank White for his leadership in, bringing us together and, and after um, Frank was the chair, we kind of continued that on. It was such good um, good medicine for all the tribes. So um, with that, we've been invited to the Ho-Chunk, Ho- Oto Missouri Winter Encapment last year, the delegation of the tribe attend. We've been invited up to Ho-Chunk Nation. We took a delegation up there several years ago. And um, likewise, we've had them and hosted them at the, Last Bear Moon. Um, so this is a continuation of, of that, that work. And um, we've been invited and the flyer shows that the Winnebago Tribe is listed as a, a invited guest. So um, just trying to encourage the council to um, continue to um, come together with the, our sister tribes and the leadership at the top level could kind of engage and, and show the people that um, that we're stronger when we're together. So, um, I'd like to ask the council for a motion to authorize travel for the tribal council. And I wanted to also invite our communications officer to document, you know, some of this, um, visit and some of the activity.
Make that motion. Second.
So we have a motion by Eric and we have a second by Isaac. Approve travel for the tribal council and our communication, attend Oto Missouri Winter Encapment twenty-twenty. Oklahoma. Question. Objection to the motion. Motion, seven, zero, zero. Um, our next order of business is the stimulus discussion. Um, the, the tribal office has been getting a lot of calls and requests because recently um, our sister tribe, the Ho-Chunk Nation had put out some, some posts about um, a payment. And, and since then, it sounds like they're, they're having um, more communication about that ARP, tribe and that's their business. Um, but it, it caused question and continued question about if the tribe was getting a stimulus payment. Um, the last time the council talked about this, we talked about the draft ARP budget and I'd shared- Um the last time the council talked about this, we talked about the draft ARP budget and I'd shared with the membership that the existing um draft ARP budget does not include a payment. And I I keep saying at this time because with different funding sources coming down and you you're watching the news and they talk about this infrastructure bill and build back better America and and so some of those dollars will trickle down to Indian country and that has yet to be um fully analyzed and received by the tribe, so it's hard to say how much more money the tribe will get for some of these projects. And the thought was, as some of these new monies come down, maybe it's possible that they move off of the ARP and, you know, infrastructure money. But it's um the last discussion, there was really good support to try to do something, but there was also really good support to um remain disciplined and that we want all these things, like a new EMS, new Boys and Girls Club, new um tribal um organization building so that we can hire more employees and have adequate office space for our our council and so um on behalf of the council, I guess I've I've listened to everybody and and I don't disagree with anyone, um but it it's just the pressure of of that at this time of year, you know, people have added expense and always wanting to um look towards the tribe on how we can um honor them and support them, so um I I just say all that and I I put the discussion on the table. So the floor is open. Lorelei, um when you added it, were you, did you want to be responsive to some to some of those inquiries or or were you wanting to um take action? I I didn't know what what the move was.
I just thought our members should hear because many of them are calling, texting, and they're I mean, I don't do um social media, so I'm not sure what's all on social media, but we have members that are asking and I think we should have a discussion here so they hear it and they know um where we are myself. Um I see this infrastructure bill get passed, and so we're gonna be able to maybe put some of the things that are budgeted under ARP and and get those from the infrastructure bill. And then on some of the houses, I I mean, some of the buildings we're talking about, I just wonder if if that's really um you know, almost unrealistic for the amount of we're trying to build. And I just think our members are letting us know that there's a need, they see other tribes in our region, they got two thousand and they all are, we have like a seventy-three or seventy-four percent compliance rate with getting the vaccine and those other tribes paid that additional five hundred to their members because they got the vaccine. And well, my grandson over here is saying a thousand, but um I just think we should really consider our members' need at this time, they're still impacted by COVID. And so I'm willing to to entertain a a stimulus payment for our members, they're having a hard time. And even if I'm the only one that's raising the question, I'm gonna raise it because you know, I think we could come up with the money and some level of a stimulus for them, that's my own thoughts.
So let's uh let's try this out here, I'll make a motion for five hundred dollars for that. Then uh if you go five hundred times fifty-four, that's two point seven, that would actually have to become talked from our, come from that, I'm guessing that fifteen for the admin bill, counting on that infrastructure. But if the motion dies, that's fine, but I'll just make the motion, see where it goes.
So I thank you, Isaac, for your willingness to make that motion, I just want to make sure that um that we talk about this in a way that's an allowable um expense, like it like a like a COVID recovery or, you know, like it we have to call it what, how we're allowed to spend that. So how would you like to express that motion?
It would be a motion five hundred dollars to the person. Second.
We have a motion by Isaac, we have a second by Eric. Um the discussion point, I I was looking at this uh just because um we had a really good discussion during our orientation process and and this is so the membership knows that um Kohli had brought forward an idea about, you know, we gotta do something for the kids, gotta do something, Kohli, I appreciate you always thinking. And and so the discussion turned into, well, if that will work out, but but you know about this, appearing that there's a need um in this time of year brings out those feelings even more, you know, that wanna go to each when we should be doing that all the time, but it it really brings good feelings in the year, so but at that time, um I respect for the council, I I appreciate um all the discussion and where everybody was coming. So I'm I just, I guess, have a firm belief, um we're gonna be okay, that 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 budget, and Alan, our CFO, has said this whole time. You know, I I will um what the council wants, but you also have to tell me where you want me to take that from in the existing budget, so um we'll work through that, we can work through that. It's just that that's the the other side of it, that um they will be taking that, shaving it off of some of those other, but but that's okay, you know, we'll we'll figure it out. Yeah, so um we'll just all sit, we'll bring this table over there, so um so that's just what I want to say is, the whole time, everyone has said, we can do this, but where do you want it from?
Speak of your microphones.
That would still fit in there, right? From that, if that infrastructure passed.
No, the infrastructure bill will not cover the admin bill.
Alan, how how do you, what would you, what would you recommend that would come from if we was to do that, if this motion was to carry?
Can I be facetious? From your building, Isaac.
Okay.
No, I'm
Remember you're on the big screen downtown.
There is, huh?
I said, remember you're on the big screen downtown, so.
I mean, there there is a, uh there is an uh option on the infrastructure bill for some good projects if we get them. That's the key is if, so we would have to take a hard look at every project that we have on that list and make a determination and as Tori so eloquently said, it's like, okay, I I can do this, but um yeah, somebody's gotta come up with the idea on where do we, where do we cut it from, because somebody's gonna get cut or something's gonna get cut until we find out for sure on like the infrastructure bill, what we're gonna get. Hang on just one second, let me order dinner.
Okay, Alan, um thank you for that comment. Oh wait, hold on, sorry, I didn't hear from you. Louis, comment?
Okay, I'm back.
Louis gonna get Louis to make his comment. You're self muted, Louis.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, yes, sir.
I forgot what I'm gonna say.
We were talking about the the stimulus.
No, I'm teasing.
Okay.
I would I would tie the payment into whether or not they got their COVID vaccination. Because it's coming along, new strains are coming along. And we don't know the impact they will have. But we've got to get to our young people to take the shot and get current. And I wouldn't I would tie that into the payment. And I and Louis, we have to identify the money. I'm hoping for any suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis, for that comment, I I think that's a good suggestion, we've seen other entities do such things, other tribes do such things. Um it it creates a, I've I've been watching the news about this new strain and they said that you know, they, the the science is already underway, but they already believe that this booster is what's going to um protect you against this strain, this unknown strain that they're continuing to study. And that that's what we know now, you know, we could just only go with what we know.
Since we're still in discussion, I I think, I don't know if Lorelei had something, but.
So I'll go back to Lorelei, so do you want to finish your comment?
So what I was looking at was kind of going along with what Louis is talking about. Um I would be okay with that since we're in discussion of having that of that, your vaccination. When you would, if this was to go through, it was to pick up your there, you would have to prove that you took the shot. My only concern on that is that um fraud, so some of these COVID cards, you can buy them online. Get to what we have, so we would have to design or come up with a mechanism or in there that goes, okay, these are valid signatures, um and that would um work with us working with our health department of nine one, that kind of stuff, just a way to verify that these are legitimate cards. So there would be some work, so I just kind of throw that out there to try to um feed Louis um thought on that, also get another vote from him.
Thank you, that's the good comment and um our team definitely has experience with kind of forms, you know, we have to, we do the clothing cards, they have to certify their, that this is for the arts, this is their kid. We've we've done that with many other things, self-certify and then in orderize.
That would even justify it even more through.
Little CYA for the tribe, yeah. Lorelei has a comment and then back to Rona.
Okay, I'll also make a suggestion, because time is of the essence if we're gonna make a five hundred stimulus payment for COVID relief, continued COVID relief. Um if we approve it tonight, so then the powers that be that have to get ready to do one can move on. And that, um I know that the CFO has a um present, an in-person presentation that we're gonna get scheduled here for the membership. Um and with this tribal council present, all of us present at this presentation so they can keep control the membership, what is in the ARPA budget? And then we ask the membership to tell us where they think we could instead of building maybe one of these new buildings, we renovate their existing building they're in as a way to find a way to find this two point seven million, but let's get it, the membership might have really good ideas about maybe a survey monkey too, I don't know, but I just think that the membership, we, they they probably have ideas about what what they see as a priority and what could be shaved down, so that's my suggestion, approve it and then we have that presentation and we hear from the membership where they have input on where to shave so that we could make this payment. And I really like that Louis' suggestion about if you have been vaccinated, you get this five hundred, I really like that. And I know my my vaccine card has the public health nurses' signatures on there and I don't think anybody can duplicate those. Okay, thank you.
I accept the challenge.
Here we go, Isaac, just kidding. Well, um when when this, when this was added to the council agenda, it's a discussion on COVID five for five hundred dollars. Um I didn't expect any any action or any motions to be done because I'm shooting in the dark, we don't know what's gonna happen from here. We don't know if the infrastructure bill is gonna cover this or if the it's it's this budget's been planned and worked on by this task force for even when CARES Act and we knew they were gonna start getting a second round of funds called ARPA. They've been working on this budget for from day one, you know, at least six to ten months, you know, last year when I got on council. And so when things come to the table like this, I think it should come with a plan. Not just a motion because you want to satisfy people to get votes or you want to make people happy at Christmas. I really think it should be on paper and I'm all for helping the the community out, but without a plan in hand, it's it's kind of hard to make that decision and to see where we're gonna fall short. And and it's just kind of like, you know, the pandemic task force, you know, their their plan and their budget that they came up with, it means nothing. So I'm for it, but also I'd like to see some back backup to it.
Um well, I was just gonna say, um thank you, Rona, for uh the comment because I I count on Rona as our our treasurer, you know, she's um we need her to be disciplined in in that way. Um so but just, I mean, yeah, I've come, but I guess just to um kind of frame it and and where maybe some of the disconnect might be is the the ARPA presentation, much like the CARES presentation, um Alan, I know, has drafted it and worked on that presentation. And because we kept saying, um we need to show people what's in here and those projects that are in there came from the survey monkey that the membership did to rate those um projects or some of these building requests that had come through in the organization's wish list, I think is what we were calling them. And then they were kind of put out there like, the membership in that survey monkey, um how do you rate these priorities that have been asked for? And so that's kind of how Boys and Girls Club ended up on there, EMS ended up on there because either the task force or the individual departments or entity identified that as a need in their um draft wish list. And then it came to um to the membership to say, okay, what do you think? So then those kind of got prioritized and then what made it into the budget? Um I'm I'm forgetting some steps here, but um the the next part that happened was that whole budget had to go towards the criteria and say, okay, we have all these um requests for um I'm not even gonna name some of the requests because some of them were wish lists, you know, it's pie in the sky, like, man, we'll never get this um one-time money, let's, what do we need over here? So as that process is underway, maybe somebody wants an ice cream machine in their office, but um but that's not allowable, you know? And and we'd love to do that for you, but this money criteria, these are the things we can use it for. And so the process began on justifying what all those asks aligned with and um so from there, I think things fell off the budget, you know, and so as we kind of came along and then the council finally got that draft um ARP budget that we approved. But all along that way, you know, I don't know if you guys heard some of my critical comments or me being kind of, as Alan said, a little facetious, um was, and I I I remember comments made to me during the CARES process and they said, how was that for the membership? How was that for me? If they all get new desks, how does that help me and my family? And I'm like, ah, I hear you, I hear you. And so that's where I'm kind of like, God, we gotta strike it right in the middle, you know, where where we're updating our buildings and and equipment so that we can provide services to the membership and we have to make sure that the membership feel acknowledged, included and respected. So I I say that um to kind of clear the air, to say um this this has been a long process, but I have this these people that inbox me or people that ask and they're not asking because they're just trying to they're asking because they have a need and um and so I know the council is trying to do the best they can and so I say that in support of each of you, Isaac.
So um responding back to Rona, so that's why I kind of threw it out there, there's there's the vote. So it comes down, so you got valid points and stuff, you know, you're trying to do your job and stuff. That's why it, that's why there's, there's eight of us here. Are yeah. So... If this motion goes, it goes. If it doesn't, it can always, yeah, yeah. And I understand that. And so, but, um, there's other things too, there's like, that comes up to what? Point seven? Somewhere in there. It's over a million dollars. So in order to be moving that money, there's seven of us.
So it's not drawing down from the investment portfolio, so you don't need nine people.
Okay.
That's, that's just investment portfolio policy. I hear where your question is.
That's all I have.
Okay, Eric's got his hand up and then Coley after that.
Yes, I'd like to state that, you know, I know, I know it's been brought up for vaccination, but our enrolled members, they have their reasons why they didn't get vaccinated. Did they not have, maybe they're, they're pregnant, maybe health issues, whatever it might be. I don't, I don't think we should do the only vaccinated. So... Oh, man. Extra 50 for the booster. Yeah. And so also on that, the, I know, I know there was, this is kind of last minute and it's coming to the table here. And it has been discussed before that... During this time with the weather changing, you know, like I said before, $500 is lucky, just enough to cover propane. And for, for some places, that, that, that's only good for a month, maybe two months. You know, we don't have the best houses on a reservation. Presents gas, gas is going up. And so that's kind of why I'm saying that, that to look past the vaccination. Because our enrolled members, if they're vaccinated or not, they need help. And, and it's just a good time to have them, give them some, some extra money to, for that Christmas coming up, the holiday. And so I think, I think the council will come together, you know, offline after the meeting or within the next day or two to discuss where that money comes from. Because you know that if we had to for this, this reason, that we could, we could pull it out of somewhere, even if it was the portfolio to support our, our enrolled membership. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Coley.
Uh, thanks. Thank you, Chairwoman. Chairwoman, she did mention my name earlier and, no offense and I'm not angry, but I just wanted to, I, you know, I took, she mentioned I had an idea for the kids. We talked about this at our orientation meeting. I don't think it was recorded or nothing, but it's where we, we organize and set our boards and stuff and that, you know, within, with ourselves. Since we are talking crazy, I got this crazy ideal, you know, where I thought, hey, maybe we could take, give some of our children their money for the holidays, especially during Christmas time. Because I, you know, I know how it is, you know, and how we want our children, you know, to wake up to gifts, to have a tree, you know, to have gifts under their, under their tree. And, you know, I could go on and on, you know, really try and make it sound good, but you know, it, it would be taking money out of our children's fund, you know, when they turn 18 years old, you know, and that, that's, that'd be totally up to the parents if they wanted to or if they did not want to. And I just wanted to put it out there, you know, because I took it home and I put it in my closet. There's a lot of stuff in that closet, but, that, I, yeah, I just took that crazy idea home, you know, and I didn't put it out nowhere. And I wasn't trying to sell it, but since I had, there's an opportunity, I, I want to bring it up and good time, we're online. So I want you guys to consider that, you know, if you think it's a good idea, just let us know. You know, that if you want, you know, we can and we would like to, some of us to give the children some of their own money for Christmas. You know, so they can do what they want or you can buy presents for them, you know, and hopefully it goes that way, 100%. And I kind of, I would, I think I'm going to support this motion. We'll see where it goes. Thanks.
Thanks, Coley. And I was trying to give you props. So I was trying to say, you know, Coley's, you know, he's always thinking of the children and I appreciate that, Coley.
Yeah, that's why I just had an opportunity to put it out there. Thank you.
Brian, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As a discussion item, I think if we were, or at least from my perspective, I was prepared to try to find some type of methodology with which to justify this type of payment. Because if we look back at what the tribe has actually dispersed versus, or in combination with what this motion would potentially do, we're talking a dollar figure in excess of $10 million distributed directly to the membership of the tribe. Now, I do understand that it was a very good intention to try to provide whatever assistance we could to the tribal membership for the various needs that are faced. But I have to ask the question, because this was obviously just something discussed long before tonight, is what could the tribe have done with $10 million? How many homes could it have built with $10 million? What level of infrastructure would it have been able to create to allow the further buildings of very much needed resources for the tribe, such as a dialysis unit or even the long talked about proverbial assisted living? How far could $10 million have went? Because right now, and I understand that it may not be very popular, but that money basically went poof. And it didn't provide anything that the tribe was going to benefit from in the long term. The short-term reality that we're facing right now is real and I'm not negating that. I understand that people have needs and that people are looking for the tribe to provide some type of assistance with that. But with that being said, I'd like us to make this type of decision justified on something more than, okay, it's Christmas. Because Christmas comes every year and had this been something that was truly looked to be needed, then a plan should have been put into place to make sure that this Christmas was provided for. But instead, here we are, what is it, 13 days or 22 days before the event? And we're supposed to automatically justify something here? For me, it's, this is a discussion of what we would do if we weren't good planners, what we would do if we followed everything based on passionate whim of the day. And I think that we're better than that as a tribe and as an organization. I understand that the tribal members have needs and I've seen the messages myself. I've had people ask, are we going to do something too? But at the same time, using that initial scenario where I believe this commentary offered that what happened in Wisconsin. The embattled president attempted to move something forward, but the legislature came back and made a better decision to halt something done because it was made out of, it was a decision made out of passion, not out of logic. So as we consider this, and this was supposed to be a discussion, I would like us to have that greater discussion. Because like Rona, I want us to see, I want to see us have, what is the actual cost of this? What is the timeframe for dispersment? Where is the money actually going to come from? And then by the same token, which project is going to be eliminated because we're giving people money? Those kind of things can't be ignored simply because a check gets written. Because at the end of the day, the check comes due and it's the tribe that's going to be holding the bag with that. So what are we going to give up in order to facilitate a passionate response to a holiday need that we knew was coming? It's not meant to be a downer, but at the same time, and if it is and it's taken that way as a downer, then that's proving my point. This should have been something that was planned for. This should have been something that was brought up long before, however many days before the holiday. And at that same time, because it was supposed to be a discussion and maybe it still will be, why is $500 the magic number? Why can't something different be done? And then to facilitate some of the discussion that Coley had and his idea that he presented a couple of weeks ago, we've labored under the, under the practice of providing any dispersment to the membership as automatically going into the trust fund for those under the age of 18. It is possible to pay that out in a lesser amount to those individuals. But then again, the question that got brought up is, what is a two-year-old going to do with $300? What is an eight-month-old going to do with $300? And those are very real things because that's what we've seen and maybe it's something that no one wants to bring up. We've seen that being abused. We've seen it misused. And the benefit that that child would have received as an adult was immediately eradicated. And I don't think that's fair to those children. Is that across the board? No. But does it happen enough to be noticed? Absolutely, yes. Then the other side of this, Madam Chair and members of the council. When we had the previous dispersment, we had discussion, but not enough in my opinion regarding what this does for those living with addiction. We are basically facilitating and enabling them. I've seen examples of different tribes refuse dispersment until those members basically were brought into some type of treatment standard and the families themselves took responsibility for what they were allowing happening in our community. Is that something that we would even be able to consider, council? That if you know that you have an addicted family member, that none of us, and that includes you and your family, would receive anything until you facilitate effective treatment of that family member? So therefore the tribe is not enabling them any further? But see, the point of all of that and to bring it all back together, none of that has been discussed. Everybody likes to be the candy man, give out the money. And who's going to refuse free money? But at the end of the day, I would hope that it's done with more of a sentient plan and more of an idealism toward benefiting the tribe as opposed to satisfying immediate need. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for your comments and for your, your thought in, in wanting to have this done in a way that's more robust, you know, and more having something in, right in front of us. I know the council has had ongoing discussion about this and at that time, it was just kind of like, I, I thought there was a willingness, but everyone was trying to just, you know, stick with the approved budget because, you know, everybody did approve that draft budget. It was a unanimous vote to approve that budget. And so when we talked about this right before Thanksgiving, at that time, the discussion was, we need to, we need to uphold this draft budget. And, and so I don't know if, if, what set of outside factors led to the continued discussion, but I, I hear what you're saying about those living with addiction, those that might not use these in a good way for their families. And we had those same discussions last round that came up about, what about those that owe child support? And, and so it brings up kind of all these other themes. So I, I understand what you're saying. And through, through everything that I've heard and everything that I listened to from my colleagues and everything that has been expressed, you know, those are true statements. And, but it doesn't, it's almost like we want to punish everybody for what some individuals choose to do. But that's the challenge is going to find the best decision. So I, I don't know where to go either, but I, I think they will, people that will be thankful and we have a team that is going to, if this passes, then they're going to jump right in and make it happen because of the good things and hard work that they are. But, okay, Lorelei and then Rona has a comment.
Madam Chair, I think we can have a meeting and pare down, find those funds within the ARPA. I really do. We're creative people, we can do that. And I am in support of a stimulus for the people, 500. And we can pare down that ARPA budget to meet that 2 million. But I want to see this go out to our members. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorelei. Rona. So in looking at the planning process, when we did the first dispersment, it took, it took about six weeks. To order checks, to order all the supplies that were needed to print and do these checks. And so in looking at the finance, you know, it's going to be a minimum of one month maybe, but it would be easier in two months. But we wouldn't even get anything for Christmas.
I thought we did that one pretty quick. It happened pretty quick.
Did it really quick. It didn't take no six weeks.
Except the only thing is we got to spell Nebraska right this time. I can't remember. But that's how quick we were working. Put that wrong. Um, so I, I liked understanding that, you know, any action that we take at the table, you know, we have a, that is towards these actions. This will do the best we can. Happens, but I understand Rona is looking out for her team and means that they'll have to put everything aside. Our enrollment department was a part of this, so there was many hands. What's realistic, that's to be, but, um, bringing us realistic thinking.
Yes, I, I agree with that. That is, that is something that we do have to look at. And I believe our team is flexible and capable enough to ensure that this happens before Christmas. And who wouldn't, who wouldn't refuse free money that, you know, it's not about separating anyone about that. But the enrolled membership that put us in here, we kind of like to be recognized by some of the money that they don't know where it's going. If it's going to them, they'll feel better about that, especially during... So was asked, why, why 500 was the magic number? And that was a pretty good question. Maybe it should be more than 500. That's being questioned. But I believe there's time. Thank you.
So the motion on the table is 500. Second, 500.
So, so I guess just to kind of, what Brian brought up, 500. And to settle everybody down, I guess, we're kind of all over the table here, but... So I could withdraw my motion if I wanted to. And I could make that for $1. That would be $5,400. Now, I'm just, I'm just saying that because probably not even anybody's really watching them. There's watching them. All the inboxes are going to blow up and here we go. Um, so I was looking at that and I have to agree with some of the things that were commented about. Even from the addiction and everything and some of the stuff that you said, Brian, and Rona and then it's, there is a lot there. There's a lot to consider when you're making that money. But at the same time, I guess that's why there's, there's this many of us here today. To try to make these decisions and figure this out and work through it. Because, and, and so I remember at the, at the other meeting we had, there, the orientation. I'm kind of sitting here scratching my head, literally, was wondering that Lorelei, I'll pick on you for a little bit. That Lorelei, I'll pick on you for a little bit, but we we talked about it and we were going back and forth about it. And today it's this way here. So I I was, I'm just asking Lorelei the question. Why, why the change of heart, I guess?
Think it has to do with the, with the money. The minors' trust fund is the children's money. And it's building up for them, and when they're, when they graduate from high school. And they can draw their money out, and it's their money. That's the difference between the whole tribe got sixty-one million in ARPA money. And it's supposed to help the whole tribe. Um, with relief because of this pandemic, so the source of money that would, that comes from ARPA is different than the children's minors' trust. So the, if this five hundred goes through, it's gonna go and build more onto the little ones miners' trust. So those are two different pots of money, and this ARPA came to this tribe because of our membership, our numbers went in. And I, I believe that um they, our tribal members see all these other tribes get two thousand, we paid fifteen hundred out to help with. Food, transportation. Um, living. And our members were, are even went in for COVID shots and and we have a compliance rate of at least seventy-three percent. And I just feel like our members need a little bit of more help during this pandemic with these COVID monies. That came to us because of this pandemic, so I, I, that's why I'm in support of this five hundred. But it's a whole different pot of money than the minors' trust.
So um you guys raised another interesting point, the, the previous payment that we had given. The funds went into the minor trust funds for the minors. And we had gotten some feedback from the membership and and I. And I'd seen it, same kind of response from other tribes that did or didn't do it this way. Some tribes gave that allocation, and and sometimes the minors' allocation was a lower amount than adults. The parent got all that money because they said, we're in a pandemic, this money for the pandemic, what's it gonna do for my child in um? Sixteen years, say they were two years old. But right now, formula went up. Went up, and so now I need that money now for my. So you could be both ways on that, you could say, geez, um someone over here is gonna get money for four kids and they don't even have their kids. Um, well, we can take care of that, we'll figure that one out. But then somebody might say um that parent's gonna use it for whatever they're gonna use it for. And at some point, we gotta trust our people, you know, I, I, I agree, those things probably happen and we probably know people that are doing those things, but. Some point, we gotta um trust and have faith. And and they have to answer, you know. They um, best we can. So, but I bring that point up because that's one of the questions that I wrote down. I would be that this last time, account, this time. I see people um buying up and commenting, the total paper's gone again, and so people are already kind of going into mold, you know, buying things. So I'm just here as the kind of liaison, offer comments, remind us of things that we talked about and. But this is really good, thank you guys. So, Rona. I was on the road right before Fourth of July. I was going and Eric was. Right before the holiday weekend. Um, we, um, we have a motion on the table, do we have any further comments or discussion? Isaac, are you proceeding with the motion that you were thinking about? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where it goes, I mean, that's what there's. You're not gonna hurt my.
Just, just one more, I'm advocating for my finance team. If the motion was made July first. All the information, don't not have, we not have. Two members yet. I just said, all that stuff. Don't know how many we've approved and adopted or whatever, we have, we don't have anything of that set yet. So those aren't in our system since election, those, we don't even have those numbers yet. Go from July first motion, when we got all the names and everything, system was July nineteenth. Looking at eighteen days. Eighteen days from when order checks, the motion, we order checks. To when we got them fully printed and stuffed. But without even the new information, new membership, then I don't know how long it'll take. And also, we're in um audit prep mode right now. Ready for the audit.
The other thing, is that any time? Motion goes through, that's good. So you can come back and revisit it.
But the possibility of it getting done by Christmas. Day turn.
And your team ain't that good?
It's the checks and we don't have a complete list. It wouldn't be fair to the new membership to be having to wait longer than everybody else.
So why couldn't we just get a list?
It's, it must not be in our system yet because we don't have anything.
Going wrong. Um, that list.
Wasn't much. Bring in a newspaper.
And so I just now wrote down another question, it, it would be everybody enrolled as of. Today, and last time we said, well gee, we got all these applications and we don't know what to do, so then we tried to make it good for them, but I, I think we just have to. And and the ones that got enrolled after, at election time, they did, you know, get to be a part of that. Oh, that's another question that I'll write down on. So if if you guys wanna um make call for the question, we can figure out where we're at on this. Um, you can add this. You can meet on this before the CEU report, we can meet on this after the CEU report. You know, we have to put some work into this too, maybe we help stuff envelopes, I don't know, you know, we. Happy to help. That's the way this is going, but I just, I hear what Rona's saying, I, um Alan hasn't commented, but um. Or, you know. That he has some of the same concerns. So. We can, we can talk logistics, but those logistics, I guess, are based on if this motion even passes. In an ideal world, this would have come cold, but.
Tori, I've been texting my concerns to Rona, so. Cause my battery's dying.
So we've heard your concerns.
Well, I, I mean, those are the questions I asked him, is it physically possible? And he doesn't feel like it is. It's not. Jasmine, okay. Cause I didn't have Jasmine.
So why is it not possible? I guess, what are the what, like the timing or? Okay, so here's one thing to put out, um maybe we start it and then. People are gonna spend every dime they have to do what they can, I'm. Maybe it's like a real recovery and they have something um. You know, January first, I don't know. Whereupon tax time, but not everybody gets, you know, big returns, not everybody has earned it in credits, so. So I'm just talking out loud here, um. We can, oh, so, I'll for the question. Objection to the motion. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye or signify by raising your hand. I have Lorelei. Isaac. Eric. Coley. Opposed. Rona. Louis. Abstentions. Motion carried four, two, one. Um, I'd, I'd like the council to um come together tomorrow morning at nine AM. Before the CEU report, so we can have a discussion on how and if we need to take um. Would you continue that on after CEU report? Well, I just wanna get us together, um, well, let's say eight thirty, is eight thirty right there? Oh, it is? Oh, yeah, moved up. Okay, I thought it was at ten, all right, um. I'm trying to get. Um. Okay.
Seven thirty, I mean.
But our motions seem not to carry no weight, according to some of our tribal programs. Just, just because we make a motion here, some of those things aren't taking care of it.
Just don't do it, I'll see what happens.
So that's why I'm, I I throw this out there with that mentality of of. You know. Kind of put that out there.
So um, we're gonna do best we can and we're gonna support the finance team. And we're gonna um, we're gonna work this and we're all gonna help.
Sorry. Since council passed the motion, we will do everything that we can to make it come true, but we're gonna need some help because. This last time, it was all upon the finance staff to do this. And they went above and beyond with no help from anybody else.
Thank you, Alan, for mentioning that, we definitely appreciate your team and um. Look forward to solutions. So, you guys wanna try to meet for a question at eight AM? Um, so Rona will lead that discussion, I'll be here and, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just teasing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
One of the other options to consider during the payment, and I know it might sound rather absurd, but it's real, is. If checks can't be ordered, then it's an actual cash dispersment. Cause I heard a, a local tribe cashed their ARPA check. The whole thing.
They cashed.
So it's doable.
We would also be putting our law enforcement to the test too, so we're kind of hitting on all these areas.
Okay. So um our next, our next agenda item is um council, I had shared an email with you earlier this week. The Great Plains Tribal Chairman's Association is the area body um that all the Department of Interior programs kind of um address. Um, there's the Great Plains Tribal Leaders Health Board, and that's all the HHS programs. And so the, the chairs or the each of the tribes in the Great Plains area, the seventeen tribes are a member to these bodies. And each um sends the chair or or their delegate to these meetings and. I'm more active in the health board meetings than I am. The Chairman's Association, but that's just from the proxy roles that I've um got to fulfill. But this, the Chairman's Association typically holds their meeting during the LNI basketball tournament. And they schedule all these kind of meetings around that time. So I wasn't planning originally to attend that meeting, I have a, um a family obligation. But um, I, the email that I forward to you guys, that they've invited um. The Honorable Deb Holland, and Deb Holland has accepted. And so in preparation for that, the tribes are being asked to draft positions. And to come there prepared to talk about your tribes. I know we have issues with law enforcement, most recently our child and family. And this is the opportunity to tell um these decision makers really what's going on, on, on the people's land, on the reservation and. And so I'm, I'm really extending the invitation. To the tribal council, to who would wanna go and be a part of that meeting. And that um, that we go kind of as a delegation and and um, and who's available. And who to show a presence, you know, I'm, I'm willing to go, I'll. Um, it's my dad's birthday on the sixteenth, so I'll leave after that, or I'll do something, you know, I don't know what I'm doing. It's important. So um I was asking for a motion for travel.
Make a motion to approve travel for the Great Plains Tribal Chairman's Health Board Meeting. Rapid City in December.
Or Chairman's Association.
Chairman's Association.
It's in Rapid City, December seventeenth and eighteenth.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Coley and we have a second by Louis for the Great Plains Tribal Chairman's Association. For tribal council delegation. Discussion. Um, in the discussion, I've, in, in email you guys will see, I noted to our general counsel that this will be on general counsel's agenda to start talking about the priorities that the council want included in that document. And that'll be the next step as we prepare for this meeting on seventeen. Um, if you only wanna go for the seventeenth and then turn around and come back, that's okay, um. Cause Deb Holland will be there on Friday the seventeenth, and then Saturday the eighteenth will be other business of, of the body, so. Based on what that agenda looks like, um maybe folks just, you know, don't stay all weekend, so. Look at your schedules, look at what's going on and consider it. Okay, so. Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. Our last item on the agenda, I believe, is the executive session discussion, do we have our tribal members on the line? Okay, do we have a motion to go into executive session? And um for the memberships concerned, I believe we'll adjourn out of executive session, and we won't return to this link, this is our last item. So um with that, we have a motion by Eric to go into executive session, do we have a second? Second, second by Isaac, discussion. Objection to the motion. Motion carried seven zero zero. Um, we're gonna take a five-minute recess as we rejoin the executive session, um folks can use the restroom. And we'll see you in executive session.